Hello, everyone. This is Heather Von Mering. I'm Chair of the Winchester Planning Board. It is July 7th, 2020, and I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:32. On with us on the Zoom call who are members of the Planning Board is Diab Jerius, and we have Maureen Meister. And I don't see Heather yet, but she may be joining us. And then also with us is Brian Zickelli, the Town Planner, who is in charge of the Planning Department. Just so everyone knows, you our meeting is recorded and it is played on Wind Cam. We typically do not share our video when we run the Planning Board meetings because we do a lot of screen sharing. Brian and that Brian does, he's the host. So you can, we can see all the images that we're talking about and the different things that we're discussing. As well, just so everyone knows, since it is recording, if you do speak, please say your name and your address. And if you are called on by me. So we are going to begin with updates and we are going to go through our Planning Board election for the Chair, Vice Chair and Clerk. Thereafter, about 7:45, it may be slightly later, just because we have some big updates that we have to discuss quickly. We're going to move to 88 Harvard Street. And then we are going to go onward to the ZBA petitions for number 3905 for 30 Clark Street. The number 3906 for 36 Mount Pleasant Street. Thereafter, we're going to talk about the RFP for the North Main Street. Going onward, we have to talk about our fiscal year 21 agenda items discussion. What the Planning Board plans to do and our focus for the fiscal year 21. In addition, we have to include in that some discussion about Fall Town Meeting and what we need to start doing to prepare if we want to bring anything to Fall Town Meeting. Then we'll go through any new business that we need to take care of if that were not known at the time of the posting. Go through our meetings and hopefully with all of that, we will be done adjourned by 10:00 PM. So Brian, why don't you kick us off with some of your updates?
Sure. The biggest update has to do with the Woburn project known as the Vale. This is close to in full, the whole master plan is close to a million square feet. Right now, the residential portion of the project, which is in the form of two special permits, is before the City Council tonight for the for the opening of the hearing. They do things a little bit differently. Mostly because of the fact that they're a city, so they do things a little differently in terms of special permit. So what happens is the City Council is the special permit granting authority. They're opening the meeting tonight and then what's called a special permit committee will review the special permit. It consists of staff and other members of the community. That meeting, it's unclear whether there's actually public input for that meeting. It is a public meeting, but it's not, when I talked with Woburn, the planners, they're like, well, sometimes they open it up for comment and sometimes they don't. The idea is that they would be reviewing these two special permits and then giving a recommendation to the City Council for a potential vote. Although the fastest vote I think we would have ever seen, there's potential for that vote to happen on August 3rd. So we would be leading up to some type of a, if the Planning Board wishes to, they would, you would be leading up to some type of a letter or some type of a correspondence leading up to that August 3rd meeting. We could talk about some of this more in our FY21 agenda. There's a number of stormwater issues with how they are dealing with all of the earthwork that they are doing on that site. And we want to make sure that the tens of millions of dollars of money that the town of Winchester has spent on on stormwater infrastructure doesn't go all to waste. So the idea is that this is the, there's no doubt, this is the largest project that Woburn has ever contemplated. And it does about our community as well as Stonemans, and both of us are concerned. Both us and Stoneman are very concerned about not just the stormwater, but the visual effects and the traffic as well. So that's the process that we've been laid out, laid out to us. Again, the Planning Board will have time up until August 3rd and it's unclear how long their process would would take. So more information about that a little bit later. The other, the Shared Streets Grant.
Can I back up real quick, Brian, just to drop that to the board? So I know Diab you had questions regarding scheduling. And my email specifically was who is writing the town's letter? That is coming from the Select Board and the Town Manager, and Brian has been supporting them with adding and looking, reviewing things along with Beth to give them information so they can formulate their letter on behalf of the town. The Planning Board, my anticipation, but it's up to the Planning Board, obviously, is that we would do a secondary letter to that. That would be formulated either at our next meeting or pending, we may do a special meeting for it, depending on how much time it's going to take and how many documents we have to discuss. But at this, it was not planned for this meeting. The majority of the public input was, I hope, was being taken care of by the Select Board and the Town Manager to formulate that letter on behalf of the town, but the Planning Board was really going to focus in on strictly, straight up the land use component of it and how it impacts us. So very, very hyper focused on our part. Does that sound good to the Planning Board to do that? In the next meeting, we'll discuss that memo that we will do on behalf of just the Planning Board, not on behalf of the town?
That sounds fine. I don't want to give this a huge amount of time. We don't have the expertise. Brian does. It's, there's a lot of water issues. I just don't want, we've got so much else that I don't want to give this a disproportionate amount of our, we've got one pie and we've got to carve it up.
Diab, do you have any thoughts?
I just got a text from Diab saying that he lost his Zoom connection. He's trying to connect. I just sent him the calendar invite again, but he's not on the call at the moment.
Okay, Heather, Hannan?
No, but I don't remember seeing a letter from the Town Manager or the Select Board. Is that what you mean? They they sent something?
Yeah, they're working on formalizing, like composing that letter, right?
Oh, okay.
Brian's been sending them points of things that he thinks is important from his perspective, along with Engineering's been doing it, and then also Legal has been.
So Heather, those, so the the letter from the Select Board as well as the Legal Council letter. I sent both of those to the City Council last night at 8:30, last night, 8:30 last night. So they got them in time and a day before their meeting tonight. I can obviously forward those along, but those just got sent to Woburn last night late.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'd be curious to see what what was said.
Yeah, there's a lot, to be honest.
Okay, did you send that to us, Brian?
I thought I did, but that's an easy one to send around again if I had, if I had, I can make sure in just a second.
That's okay, after the meeting too.
Sure, sure.
Just wanted, looking at my, I didn't have a chance to check my email today for the Planning Board due to work, so. Please, if you didn't, please send it. We'll wait, we'll go bring that back up. I see Diab is back on. So Diab, I just wanted to see if, I don't know where you cut out and what you missed on the Vale.
I just caught the beginning. Brian was was describing the process. Hello?
So Brian was describing the process?
Yes, that's where I cut out.
Sum it up, the, a letter went out last night on behalf of the town. It was written by the Select Board and the Town Manager with Brian's support. That was some of the emails that Brian was CCing the Planning Board on was his communication with that. And the planning, my intention was that the Planning Board would come in behind with a letter that's just from the Planning Board, not on behalf of the town regarding our, our feedback, but we would do it at our next meeting. And Brian's going to forward that letter. It looks like it just came through that the, that was written on behalf of the town.
So there's two letters. There's one letter that's, I mean, the letters from Engineering and Planning.
Oh, okay.
Solely. I mean, yes, it's signed, it's signed by the the Chair of the Select Board. I believe it, yeah, it's signed by the Chair of the Select Board. But most of that were comments from Planning Department and the Engineering Department. And like I said, they were pretty extensive. And then there was a legal letter as well, but they're just focused on one issue, but there could be more, but that, but at the moment, they only felt comfortable moving forward with one issue, which was the emergency access issue.
So we'll go, if it's okay with you, Diab, we'll take it up in our next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. And if anyone is on this call who is from the Vale or following it, make sure that you are in touch with the Select Board members and the Town Manager's office. The Planning Board will be writing our own letter. And if you want to CC us on any of those communications we have with them, we're welcome to take it. You can reach the entire Planning Board at planningboard dot, uh, planningboard, oh my gosh.
The Planning Board.
Planningboard@winchester.us. And that goes to the entire Planning Board, including the Town Planner. And we will read anything that you have and anything that you feel and we will bring it up into an agenda item on our next meeting. Okay, go on, Brian, move on to the next item, the, on the updates, my apologies.
That was, that was the only thing that I kind of wanted to talk to now in order to get to, to keep with the agenda. We were still hoping to have an election over the next four minutes, maybe to go before we we talk to 88 Harvard Street. So I didn't know if we wanted to just go into that.
Okay, so Planning Board members, can you please unmute yourselves? And so usually after every election, the Planning Board goes through and votes for Chair, Vice Chair and Clerk. Do we have any comments?
Brian should run the meeting now.
Yep.
Right. So like Heather just said, we have three positions that are open. We, I would be, I would entertain any motions for a recommendation for the position of Chair.
Oh, I, I recommend that we retain Heather Von Mering as Chair for the next year.
Me too.
All right, so it's been first and seconded.
We should ask, is Heather willing to do it?
Well, we still have discussion, we can have discussion, but it, there, there has been a a first and a second. Is that now, is there any discussion? Heather, would you like to address the Board?
I will continue. I am happy to continue if that's what the Board would like me to do.
It's Maureen, thank you. I do feel like, especially in this period with kids at home and jobs and everything, just to encourage you, and you will have the Board's support, that we really do want to end at 10 and that it's appropriate to with consultation from the Board, figure out what our priorities are and other things are just going to be 10 minutes or five minutes. And I just urge you to, still, we do need to get out at 10. These are long days. Anyway, I think we should call a vote.
So, yep, there's, there's been first and second, and we're going to do a roll call, all of those in favor for Heather Von Mering to be Chair of the Planning Board starting July of 2020. Diab?
Aye.
Heather Hannan?
Aye.
Maureen Meister?
Aye.
Heather Von Mering?
Aye.
I don't believe Betsy is on. Motion carries 401 with Craig or absent. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the Vice Chair of the Planning Board starting in July of 2020.
It's Maureen. We really have combined and added Vice Chair. As you know, under the state statute, there is no such position. The state does require a clerk, so we just have traditionally called the clerk also the Vice Chair.
Thank you for that point, Maureen. So this is actually, I would take, I would entertain a motion for the Vice Chair slash Clerk of the Planning Board starting in July of 2020. I anticipated this would be a one-year position.
I would like to ask if there's, who was interested?
I'm interested.
Heather Hannan, are you interested? Are you?
No, I am not interested. Be happy for Diab to to have that role.
Maureen?
No, it's fine.
Okay, I would like to nominate Diab to be the Vice Chair Clerk.
The motion for Diab to be the Vice Chair slash Clerk by Mrs. Von Mering. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Hannan. Any discussion? All those in favor, Diab Jerius?
Aye.
Heather Hannan?
Aye.
Heather Von Mering?
Aye.
Maureen Meister?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I don't think so. 401 motion passes. Congratulations to Ms. Heather Von Mering and Mr. Diab Jerius. Great. We are, we are right along the schedule here. We, I think now, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the idea was that I do see that Brendan Lyons is on the line. I think the idea is he was going to, they have asked to become in front of the Board to get the Planning Board's position on a potential new house construction based upon the proposed demolition of 88 Harvard Street. They wanted, Brendan and Sean Lyons wanted to get the, the Planning Board's opinion. I have their PDFs that they had sent. I was just going to put them up, let him talk for five minutes, and then we were going to open it up to the Board. Heather, how does that sound?
That sounds good. Can you watch the time, please, and call him at 5?
Yep. So Brendan, I'm going to turn it over to you and I'm going to put up the three PDFs. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Hey, how we doing? Thank you for letting us participate tonight. I'm here with Sean, Sean Lyons. So yeah, I passed a few drawings off to Brian last week and basically just want your guys' input before we go ahead and talk to our the guy we use for the water management plan and go from there, see what you, what your guys' opinion were on the different designs we have. We've done most of these houses in the past in other towns, primarily in Medford and Arlington. This was our first project in Winchester, which we've been holding on to a while because we had difficulties getting to the town prior. So, yeah, we will be asking for variances in a few small areas. So we would love your input. Did you get that? Did anyone get?
Yep. All right. Did you want to talk about a few things? You have a few minutes left about what you're actually proposing?
Yeah.
So there's, there are residents on here are new to this, that a general overview of what you're up to would be helpful for them?
Okay, sure. Okay, to make a long story short, right now, there's an existing two-family there. And we want to put, we want to take it down and we want to put a duplex there. When I went to do this in the past, there was a big issue about my landscaping plan, but let's forget about that. So I want to, I want to go before the town again and try to get my special permit slash variance, whatever you want to call it. And I want to put up a structure. And I'm told that I, that I should, not I have to, I should go before you people first to make sure it's what you people would like to see there. And I, I was kind of thrown back by that and didn't really understand what they were talking about. And then they said, well, you want different, you're opposed to certain roof lines or the way sometimes the houses sit, the driveways or whatever. So I threw together a couple of plans and I said, is this something that would get past your Board? Is this something you want? Or is there something wrong with these plans? That makes sense.
Clarify, who told you that?
I, I'm, I was told by the people in, in, in building to before, before you go.
Okay, it was a recommendation from the Building Department.
Just a recommendation. They said, you know, before you go crazy, giving us a set of plans, why don't you go to these people, meaning you people, okay, Planning Board, to see if the plans that we would like to put there jive with what you want to see, so that I don't go through the process that I did last time to get kind of thrown up, thrown aside. So in other words, is this something that I should proceed with, or do you have any problems with these plans that I, that you're looking at now?
Heather, I'm just going to jump in super quick. This basically has to do with the definition of a duplex. So this is, this is why the Building Department suggested, well, before you get full designs, you might want to make sure that the definition of a duplex is solid before you move forward. So that's, that's why.
Yeah, correct, correct. It's, you know, see, it's been so long that I forget about all the, all the mumbo jumbo. But I, I thought there was an issue about a roof line, what a duplex looks like, how you want the two duplex joined, something about, you know, garages, should they be together? Should they be apart? And, you know, different, you know, in my opinion, little things that can mess you up. So I threw together a set of plans. Is this something that you people, would you people be opposed if the Building Department gave me a building permit to put this house up?
And, and you're demolishing a house, correct? Have you talked to Historical at all?
Years ago, we'll talk to him again.
We have already, we've already had it, the asbestos removal, we had a beta for traps, and then we got you know, kind of stormwater got postponed because they didn't like the landscape plan and we moved on to other projects. So we talked to them probably three, four years ago, but we're going to have to revisit them again.
So are you aware that our laws have changed from three to four years ago?
Yes, that's, that's why we're here with you.
Well, it's not just with the definition of a two-family, but also with the site plan review and special permits?
Yep. I agree with you 100%, but you can only do one at a time.
Well, you start with Historical and then you move into the other. We provide feedback to both situations.
Okay.
Historical, but we also provide feedback to the ZBA if that's the route you go. Are you familiar? You're in a, in a historical area?
Yeah, they said we may have to let it sit for a year. I said, we already let it sit for five. What's another couple?
Okay. I know that there are a handful of people who are here who wanted to speak about this property. Maybe now would be a good time to have them speak so you have a better picture of what is going on.
Now would be a great time.
Brian, do you want to take it real quick? I have a child at my door. I just need to quickly help them with one thing. So if you want to take it to start.
Yeah, sure. I think the easiest thing would be to do, for those of you who would like to speak, the easiest way for me to do it is if you could either raise your hand in, using the raise hand function at the bottom of your participant's screen. And if, we'll, we'll start with that. It's usually easier through that or some type of a chat rather than it being a free for all. So if you'd like to speak about 88 Harvard Street, if you could please use the raise your hand function on your, on your screen, and I will recognize you.
I see someone with his hand raised.
That's interesting because I'm not.
He has his physical hand raised.
Interesting. Dougie. All right, well, let's go with, let's go with Dougie. Why don't you unmute yourself? Yeah, there you go. Why don't you, and go right over.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Doug Cromwell and I am a lifelong resident of Winchester. My family has been here in Winchester since the late 1920s. And as a child, we have a family home here on Irving Street, but we also own a home at 40 Harvard Street. And I know the house of which you speak. And it's, my, my concern is that it's, it's such an important time to be able to preserve the black history of Winchester in any way possible. Because so much has been done to make Winchester known as a welcoming town. And I think that having a black history is important to making Winchester that way. So that's, that's, again, I lived at 40 Harvard Street in the late 50s. So I went to the George Washington School up on Highland Ave as a child. So I know the neighborhood well and I know the, that, again, that specific house very well. That's, that's really what I wanted to say is that I think it's, it's just extremely important. If there's any reasonable way to preserve that house, I really believe it should be done.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're on. Okay, I'm on, I'm on.
You can speak now, yep.
Okay. I don't see where there's black history in this house. What am I missing?
The families that, yeah, the families that I have lived there originally were black families.
I must have been, okay, it must have been a long, long time ago because the guy that I bought it from, Pharaoh, F E, I don't know, one hour or two, Mr. Pharaoh, one hour or two, I don't know.
Two hours, two hours. I, I grew up with the Pharaoh family.
Okay, yeah, from what I understand, he was there like from, oh, God. 1900, I guess, but I could be wrong. Don't hold me to that date. I know nothing of anything before that.
Well, it's not the original, I'm not saying that they were the original family there. What I'm saying is that once they occupied that house, it remained their house for many, many decades. So that, that, to me, it takes on the the mantle of being a black historic site because of, one, its rarity. And two, because of the longevity of the family that did actually own it at one time and lived there.
There are some of the historians are on this call. Did any of you want to speak to that?
I'm going to just ask, I know both John Clemson can speak to more what's in the title research and the residents, especially focusing on 88 Harvard. And Nancy Schrock sent some amazing photos and Brian has those. I hope those can be brought up. So I don't know who wants to jump in, but I hope both of them would speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, this is Heather, that in our packets, we received a memo from John about the history of the house and the families who, who live there. And I'm thinking that the other people, that not everyone on the call has that same black history in front of them like we receive.
Nancy Schrock, maybe, did you want to, while I have this email of yours up, did you want to talk for a few minutes?
Yeah, I, I think it's more than just a single building, I think it's the community. That this area north of the high school has always been the area where newcomers settle. In some cases, with the black community, it was the only place they were allowed to settle. But it was also the place where the Irish and the Italians settled. So I think it's very important to retain the scale of the building. The, as many of the buildings as we can. And also, I do like the way option B provides a duplex, that's not option B. But some, I think we could look. I think you could look more at the original housing that was there. And how you can keep the scale and the, the sense of community. That's, that's part of this. I think this is a community. The African-American community was based here, they even had a baseball club team called the Harvard Team. So there is history here, it's important to retain the scale. And to keep it reminiscent of, of the past. Doug, what do you think? Oh, your voice is off.
Hello? I'm sorry, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with you 100% and pardon me for the interruptions. But I, I feel that you have a very salient point and I, I agree with it wholeheartedly.
That's good. Tell me something, what would you like to see be done on that piece of property?
If there is any way to. Re, maybe redo the outside of the house to. Be, to jive with the new, the unit that you intend on building. So that the outside retains the flavor of the house.
So in other words, keep the house as one unit and add another unit to the, to the right-hand side of it, rather than taking it down.
Can I interject, since I, I'm going to, sorry, I haven't spoken and I'm going to, it's heading off, since I'm a member of the board that actually makes the recommendation. I did it, I went hunting in the neighborhood, what we really want to do is preserve the building and we have had some success in doing that. They certainly can, it can be modified substantially, I don't know what's going on inside and where the staircase is, how that would work. So I can't answer that very directly, but we could certainly work with you further. I did go looking up and down Harvard Street as well as Irving Street. Brian, would you be able to bring up, I would have ideally asked you to do this ahead of time, but could you bring up 91 Irving Street, Street View? Because I think that'll give us an idea of how in addition can be, work with the existing building. And 91 Irving, there we go, thank you. Sometimes you've got a lot of room to work with on this site and I know you'll want garages and that's great, that's exactly what I want. But if you can bring that whole thing on to the street view, look at on the right side there, exactly. Do you see how there's an addition on the back and it recedes substantially? When you do aerial or satellite view, you can see how it's an L shape, so that what you have, and you could actually incorporate your garages into that as well. But you could have a unit which is the, or maybe it's two stacked one over one, I don't know, I don't know enough about 88 Harvard inside. But the idea is that you want to retain it and if you go back, if Brian, that's perfect. And maybe later on, Mr. Lyons can look at this example more closely or we can come, you know, get together again. But could you go back, Brian, to the existing building, 88 Harvard? What I thought was interesting about 88 Harvard Street, because I went over there with my husband and we both looked at it and I said, gee, there's a lot that's original here. And one of the things that struck me and we actually discussed was the railing. And it turns out that railing is in another photo, one of the photos that Nancy sent. So this clearly was something that these builders were using at the time. There we go, and you see how the railing is on the first floor, how it's, well, it's kind of like H shapes. And that turns up in one of the slides Nancy had as well. Yeah, there we are. You see how it's like these, these horizontals as well as verticals, but anyway, that's clearly original to the building.
I don't think so.
If we can go back to Nancy's photos, you'll see that something very similar was in one of those houses.
I, I don't see it.
These were sent today, they were earlier photos.
I, I don't see the railing that you're talking about.
They're not on the screen yet.
Okay. That's, that's what's there now.
There we go, you see the way that, that was the one, it just went real fast, Brian had it.
That's not that, that's not that house.
No, I know, but it, clearly there was a builder who was working at the same time and building these similar designs. It's, it was quite telling when I saw that.
No, I understand that, I don't, a couple of issues and not to be a wise guy, but I don't think there's a railing this side of the Mississippi that's lasted over 100 years like that. That's number one, number two, if you want railings like that, that's, it's very simple to put new railings like that on a new house.
So let's go back and talk about why it matters that this is the real house, is that we would like to see worked into your development plan. Brian, could you bring up, I had you, I asked you if you would send a couple, or if you would bring, save a couple of screenshots from things that I've been getting in my email recently?
I have a great idea, can I say something?
Respond to you.
Maureen, you're talking about the Boston Preservation Alliance as well as the statement of solidarity, correct?
That's right.
Just so everyone knows, there, there are two people, we're going to go with Jeffrey Gonio and then John Clemson after Maureen, in that order. So just so everybody knows, all right, go first, go for it, Maureen.
Thank you, so if this can be, scroll down a little bit. This is Boston Preservation Alliance and as you see, if you just scroll down, this is a very simple building. One of the aspects of preservation now is that we're not simply honoring the memorializing, if you will, through the preserve, role of preservation. The big mansions of the wealthy, the elite of a community, that we also honor other communities, including the presence of a black community. We had a black community in Boston, I mean in Winchester, it has shrunk. But we, it's still, the buildings themselves tell us about, they correspond with, they are reinforced by the, they reinforce the photographs. If you take the building down, you lose a good part of the message. If you want to go to the next slide, this is something that the preservation community nationally has endorsed. The National Trust for Historic, I'm sorry, National Trust for Historic Preservation has made it very clear as well that they are. They are committed to not just preserving these big fancy houses, big fancy buildings. But Brian, could you bring the other one on for me, the other slide? So we've got National Trust for Historic Preservation, Boston Preservation Alliance, and here's one that comes from Preservation Massachusetts. And we do have a guest here who will be speaking in a minute, this is their statement of solidarity. And this is the, this is the organization that represents preservation in Massachusetts. So we're, as preservationists, we work to preserve places in order to preserve our local, here we are, in national history. And tell the story of people who came before us. The house at 88 Harvard Street does tell a story. John Clemson will speak in a minute and he will explain to you how this place represents an amazing story of somebody who is, comes up to Massachusetts from Virginia. It's even before the Great Migration, but clearly at a time when there's already, it's massive amounts of lynching in the South. He comes north and he finds his home at 88 Harvard Street and he has three children and they're part of our community. So this house can tell that story. The house comes down, we lose the story, we really need the house to tell the story of this important and just to me, very moving chapter in our local history. So that's why it's real, let me do one more and I'll stop. When you go, as I have done, travel to a place like Prague, an example. The Jewish community was decimated, but the buildings are there and they tell the story of European jewelry, even though it was, it was annihilated. It's extremely important to save places that reflect a broad sense of our history and the diversity of our history, even here in Winchester. So I'm going to be advocating all the way along to preserve the house, thank you.
Thanks, Maureen, in order, I think we're going to go with Jeff, I'm sorry if I'm butchering this name, Gonio.
Yes, it's Jeffrey Gonio. Thanks for allowing me to take a moment of your time in this meeting, my name is Jeffrey Gonio, I'm the circuit writer for Eastern Massachusetts for Preservation Massachusetts. We are the statewide historic preservation advocacy organization in Massachusetts. And I just want to make three very quick points. First of all, we were contacted about this house and I understand that there is some good research and survey work happening now about not only this specific property, but about the area, the neighborhood in general. And I would really encourage that to proceed and proceed quickly. And the findings of that be pulled together and that they be taken into consideration for anything that happens on this property, because otherwise you're flying blind. I think that it's easy to look at a property like this and see a very workaday house, maybe in not great condition and not think anything of it, when in fact, there's a very important backstory that, that may exist here. And people are working hard to get to the bottom of it. My second point would be that Ms. Meister was correct in that this is not just a local issue, it's a statewide issue and a national issue about the, the fate and the preservation of sites that are significant to the African-American community in the country right now. And this Maureen pointed out, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, which is the, the national historic preservation advocacy organization, has set up an essentially an entire wing to deal with this issue, because it's very important. Has been so for some time, but even in these particular times, it's come to the forefront even more. And third, I would say that as a preservation organization, we would strongly support the preservation of this building. It's just from a review of the materials that I've seen here and elsewhere, there's room on the site to accommodate additional construction or an addition that would allow the preservation of the original house. And as the example that Ms. Meister put up about the property in Dorchester, the William Monroe Trotter House. Again, these buildings may not look particularly fancy or elaborate, they may not be the mansions of the wealthy, but nevertheless, they are important reminders of our cultural history. And their physical presence in our neighborhoods and our communities is extremely important to telling these stories. So thank you very much for letting me speak for a few moments and again, I urge you to preserve this building.
Thank you very much, Jeffrey, for your expertise and your comments. The next person is John Clemson from the Winchester Historical Commission, whenever you're ready, John, why don't you unmute yourself and go right ahead? Looks like you're having a little difficulty there. Let me try to, John, can you hear us now? John? All right, well, I have unmuted his phone, but that does not seem to be working, John, if you can hear us, I see that your hand is raised. Your phone number is unmuted, but unable to hear you, so I think Heather, we might have to keep moving and when he's available, he can, he can jump back on.
I'm fine with that. So I was going to bring all of it all together for Mr. Lyons overview. So the first step is to go to Historical Commission and then they decide whether they delay it or not, if you choose to demolish it. What I would like you to be aware of is you are in a historical black neighborhood. And this is, was one of those houses, there's a lot of research that's being done right now, Winchester is doing a lot of research and this property is one of them. And the consensus among many and the other members of the planning board can agree or disagree, is that they would like this house saved. And if you would like to do, turn it into a single family and do a second family to do it off in like an L shape, there's other ways to do it. To keep it, to go to the definition of the two family, one of the reasons you are recommended to come to the planning board is because if you choose to demolish. You can't proceed with the Historical Commission without having met certain criteria. And, and so you can either sit and wait it out, but then if you go for a special permit, you will have to meet the definition of the single family dwelling. The two family dwelling, my apologies, and what you have before us actually does not meet that definition. And it really actually has to read as a unified single family with two units of dwelling inside of it. So yours are actually reading as two separate units glued together, that's actually, doesn't meet the definition of the two family dwelling. However, if you kept the house as it currently is and restored it, doing whatever you wanted to do on the inside and brought in a second unit on the side, that would actually most likely meet that definition, because it would read from the front as a, as a single family unit with two unit dwellings in it. As it currently does too, it reads as a single unit with two separate units, I believe it's top and bottom as it currently is laid out. So that's what you're up against, the other thing with a special permit and a site plan, you also have to take into account the historical area that you are in. And that includes the scale and massing and the historical context you're sitting in. So also by demolishing that house, you're eliminating the historical of the property, but you still have to address all the historical that is around you. That is my interpretation of the laws, that would be my recommendation that I would give to the ZBA. And there are sketches that the planning board had done to help the ZBA know what the definition of the two family dwelling. If we wanted to have two unit, two single family houses on a, on a lot, we would have them zoned to allow two single family houses. It is not a goal to just glue them together, the glue, the goal is to have two units in a single family home. So that is, and that is where my perspective is, I'm not sure if that helped. Deib or Heather, I think Betsy is on now, did you have any comments that you would like to add, I see Deib's hand is raised, so Deib, go ahead.
Okay, I wanted to, I concur with everything that you've just said, Heather. And I wanted to point out once again, the importance of context when you're dealing with history, especially when you're dealing with people who are not, shall we say, famous individuals. And that what's historical about them is the fact that they are ordinary people living ordinary lives in a context of a neighborhood with people who have similar. You know, economic levels, socioeconomic levels, let's put it that way, ethnic groupings. So we're looking at the history of ordinary people and it always is within the context of the neighborhood. So it's impossible to look at a single structure and take it out of that context. So that's for me why it's so important that this building remain to provide that context. It's not like we can walk up to it and say, oh, George Washington lived here, because that's not the importance of the place. The importance of the place is a reminder of the people who lived there, because you know, history is made up of, 90% of, of history is made up by, you know, ordinary people. So I agree, I concur that when we look at the, the designs that you presented. Heather has pointed out, they don't look like single. pointed out, they don't look like single houses. They look like two glued together. They also do things that we really frowned upon. They give a lot of precedence to the garages so that when we look at these homes, we don't see a home, we see a garage with a home on the sides. And so I think that whatever design you come up with, if you can reduce the prominence of the garages so that once more, we see like a lot of the other houses in that neighborhood, it's the house that's front and center. It's the eyes of the house that look out on the street rather than the garages. And I think that's a design principle we've tried to push across town, not always successfully. But this is in particular, this is a neighborhood which is a tight, small, you know, narrow streets, closed houses. Putting in garages really reduces the walkability of the neighborhood and it takes away from the character of that neighborhood. So I think that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I have two things. Is anyone else's hand raised?
Go ahead, Heather. Nope. It's, the Planning Board's all speaking. Go ahead.
So I agree with everything that was said already, so I won't repeat those parts. But something that Nancy said reminded me about why we don't like to see these kinds of places demolished. And that has to do with the affordability and the people who historically have been able to live in that neighborhood. And once you knock it down and put in, you know, two units that are over two thousand square feet and new people move in, you know, it's not just the scale, but it's the affordability. And I realize we're not in control of that, but I just want to point out that it changes the dynamic of a neighborhood when you knock down a working class, you know, what was originally a working class structure and you replace it with something totally different. And the second thing I wanted to say about two families, since I live in one that is up-down, is that I think you could add an L or whatever you wanted to do to expand it, but still have it be an up-down unit. I don't, I don't see the need for the units to be, to switch side to side if they have historically been up-down units. So I would still consider that a possibility for a renovation.
And Brian just pulled up also the definition of duplex dwelling in terms of the sketches and that refers back to what I was saying is that the units need to have fully integrated, coherent, unified massing. They need to read as one unit, one massing that is a house. And we don't want it to look like in any way, two houses are just glued together. When you do the L shape versus like keep the existing house and add on to the side of it for the second unit, if you're doing up and down, you actually create that unified look of a house that's in the traditional L shape. So there's some options for you there that'll help you meet the definition of the duplex dwelling and should get you to where you need to do. I would love to see you keep that house. I think it actually is very important to the community. We, one of the things that has not been talked too much is how the zoning originally, when we went from the zoning that was there, which was non-existent to what currently is there, it pushed out a lot of the black community because it was no longer affordable. And kind of what, without with demolishing that, bringing to, we're just keep going. And I'd like to see that stop and I would like to see that house saved, restored. There are gonna be, have to be certain things that you're gonna have to let go of to keep it restored because there is rod around, different things, but the scale and the massing will be there and to do an add-on and to keep, help keep the cycle from continuing. So that is, I hope we helped you a little bit to where you need to go. And if you need any talk, I think the next place to go would be...
Yeah. You have the sound of someone wrapping up. Can we see if John Clemson can speak? I do think the history of the house is useful.
We can try again. Yeah, I agree. John, are you able to speak? Unmute yourself? Or Brian, are you able to unmute him?
Yeah, so I, I see his phone here and he is now unmuted. John, are you there? I will try and... No, it looks like a...
I think he might hit both his computer and his phone.
They are both unmuted, but so, John, can you, can you speak? Both the phone and the computer are unmuted, so I can't do more than that. Looks like it's a connection issue on his end.
So I'm disappointed, but can you bring it up? Because certainly I've read some of it and at least let's get some of the basics noted.
Yep, you're gonna have to wait a second, but I can get it.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, can I interject? Hello?
I would like Brian to finish what he's doing and then you say, after Brian's done.
All right, cool.
Thank you. Brian, you're just hunting for it right now to get it up on your screen?
Yeah, I mean, I have all the emails from John for all of June, but I'm not, I'm not seeing anything. I have the North End Survey Extension, but not, and a whole bunch from nine, ten, Main Street.
It was up just a minute ago, Brian. I thought I saw the history of the house on the screen.
Oh, I didn't realize that that was John Clemson who did that. I can get that back up.
That was him.
Sorry. This one here?
There we are. So I'm sorry, it's really John's work and it represents, to me, it's extremely impressive. What he found is that the house was built in the eighteen nineties and as you see here. And then if you can scroll up, Brian, this is all description. It's intact, which is what the description tells you about. And then keep scrolling. The part that I think is really interesting comes when you find out who, this is an early, what, history in terms, or early period in American history. The Great Migration, when the black community comes north is during World War One. But the particular owners of this building, Matthew Adams is his name, thanks to John's research, Matthew W. Adams and his wife Patty. Matthew Adams came up here before the Great Migration. He was, as John, discovered a native of Lynchburg, Virginia. And then he shows up married in eighteen ninety-eight to a woman who is white. And they're married and they lived first in Cambridge and then they moved to Winchester. And they do, if you can scroll up a little bit more, Brian, they actually, they do buy the house. They buy it into the house and then John was telling me then it was another part of the property. And you'll see there, Smith to Webster, Webster to Wilson, Wilson's and Wilson to Adams, and then Smith to Adams. So between nineteen oh six and nineteen ten, Webster, Adams, I'm sorry, and his wife take charge of the, or take ownership of this property. So it's very early, it's the first decade of the twentieth century. And then if you can go back, push this back down again a little bit, Brian, if you would. The reason, and it's, to me, it's really poignant, the reason we know is because, a little bit more, down a little more, or up, I don't know, but keep going, but yes, exactly, stop there, is because in the census, people are identified by race. So he marries a white woman. The children, of course, are all identified as C, as race or color or race, I'm sorry, as B is black. So, and then we know who he is. He worked as a porter, which was a very standard place and role of, type of employment for black workers. His wife is working as a washerwoman for a private family, one maybe in Winchester, right? And then one of the sons worked out as a farm boy. There still were farms in Winchester. What a story this tells about this family, this interracial family and their life at eighty-eight Harvard Street. And they're in eighty-eight Harvard Street for quite a few years. So we have a sense that these children would have attended Winchester Public Schools. This is part of our community. And that's the story that this research tells about one house and this one family. And I just thought it was great to hear from Dougie because it was just another example of this presence that we had in Winchester, which frankly has shrunk. And the big questions are why, what happened? And you may have some ideas, but it's, it is an important chapter in our history. And thanks to John for all the research.
Okay, we're all set?
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Lyons.
Okay. I am in the right place. They sent me to the right place. I'm glad I didn't do any more work or spend any more money going in one direction when there was this much opposition against what I was gonna do. That's number one. Number two, I, there's no way I'm gonna fight you people. No way. Number three, if the house has that much significance, not a problem, I will leave it there. If, it's gonna take me quite a while to figure out how I want to improve it without ruining it. Just slapping things on the way you've mentioned a few times really doesn't do it. However, if you are interested in a lot of the things that you spoke about, and that is affordability, all the black people or all the white people for that matter, affordability, I have absolutely no problem. I think that's a great idea. And I even wanted to put a couple of units there, smaller units. A lot of, a lot of your issues are with big units and rich units and this unit and that unit. We could put more than two units there, keep the old house and make it, you know, so you have small units that are nice, that anybody can move into and afford. I have absolutely no problem with that. However, there is a person that has a lot of problems with that and that is the city of Winchester, town of Winchester. They don't want no part of it. They make everything so expensive that nobody can move in. And you know exactly what I'm talking about. So what I'll do is I'll leave it the way it is because there's so much opposition and I'll think about what I can do to improve it without destroying it. And if anybody on this panel has some ideas, I would absolutely love to hear from them. But they gotta be concrete ideas. They have to, you know, they have to have a little bit more substance to them and it has to make sense. So with that, I thank you and I'm, and I'm out, over and out. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Lyons.
Thank you.
For coming to us.
Yep, bye-bye.
It's unfortunate that John Clemens isn't here, but I would recommend that you actually schedule a meeting for the two of you to sit down because he'll be able to help you move forward a little bit on that as well.
Heather, I want to jump in as well and say, it would help us if we had, I don't know if Mr. Lyons has any even basic plans. So if we could see where the staircase is and what rooms are, how the rooms are configured right now. Again, we're not going to try to preserve, I mean, I love interiors and maybe there's something we can preserve, but it would help a lot just to see the first and second floor plans.
Well, first of all, what you have to understand is it was beat up before I bought...
No, 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 that's okay.
No, hold on. It was beat up before I bought it. That's one issue. The second issue, there was a fire in there. The third issue is, like all those old homes, you know, sometimes, you know, there's like, you know, a tiny bathroom, a tiny kitchen. The rooms are small. It's not really what, what you'd consider rentable or saleable at this point. Now, you know, you can say all you want about affordability in black, white and purple and yellow, but everybody wants a bathroom that they can walk into without tripping in a kitchen that they can move around in. And some of these smaller homes don't have it. So the inside's kinda messed up. You mean to tell me you want to keep the outside and the inside can be destroyed? Isn't that kinda defeating the purpose?
Well, it helps with the streetscape because it does, let me back up. The main thing would be to see where the staircase is. That would help a lot.
Well, when you walk inside, the staircase is right there. The problem with these staircases in these old homes are they're all, they're not too... Yeah, they're not to code. They're just not to code. I mean, if you fix that thing up and left that stairway there, did laugh at me.
Yeah. Well, I think we'd love, I think we have some ideas here. I think speaking to John Clemson would help. And they're also, let's, I actually, Heather, I was wondering whether, we have architects on our design review committee, there are a lot of people who'd be, we've got talent here who can work with you.
Beautiful, beautiful. Listen, listen, for a reasonable, for a reasonable fee, I will pay them. Okay?
That's against the law, but we're happy to do it as volunteers.
Okay, volunteer your life away. By all means, draw me a percent of plans and I'll be, I guarantee I'll try to do it. But if you're really interested, and never mind the talk, forget about the talk, let's put some action behind your talk, every single one of yous. Let's put some action behind your talk. You talk about affordability and you talk about black and white and yellow and purple. Okay, let's put some units up there that people can rent affordably and that people can buy affordably. I got three kids in their twenties. I'm a rich guy. Hey, forget about me. I got three kids that are just like your kids. I don't think they can live in Winchester. I don't know, I don't even know if they want to live in Winchester. But let's, let's put some action behind your talk because every time, I had a plan to put more units in there and nobody would even listen to me. It's a joke. So as far as a lot of the stuff you say, you know, it's talk. Put some action behind your talk. Over and out.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. We're gonna move on, forward onto our agenda.
Thank you. Could you email this guy Crowell, whatever you have? I would, in my opinion, and maybe I'm the only one that thinks this way, in my opinion, it's an eyesore and it shouldn't have been left this way. However, it has been. If somebody is truly interested in improving it and at the same time, getting some units in there that they can rent or buy affordably, I'm all ears.
Just so you're aware, the Planning Board has been looking at accessory dwelling units and all sorts of things. There's, it's a lot more difficult than just the Planning Board making a vote to make that go through. It has to go through town meeting where a town, not a city. There's also other concerns involved that are, deal with economics. But it is something that the Planning Board has been working forward and looking forward. It's just, there's a lot of things that need to be done. It's not as easy as this board just taking a vote. If it was, it would have been done a long time ago. So just to be aware, the process to do that, it's because of the way that the town is set up, it's, it is a process and there is a lot that has to be done to get to that point.
If, that's fine, but if you, listen, I just listened to a half a dozen people and they all seem to be on, to have their, to know what they're talking about and they all seem to be very, very up to date, whether they're educated or not is another issue. What color they are is another issue and what they can afford is another issue. But they all seem to be on the ball, much more than I am. So what I'm trying to say is put some action behind your thoughts. Get through the process. You got a piece of property there that looks like hell, that you want to keep, come up with some ideas, cut through the process. You guys, you guys got the, you guys can do it.
Okay, we, thank you very much. We actually really do need to go on because we've got packed agenda.
I really don't think you should go on it. Just stop everything and work on this.
I wish.
Wait.
Please reach out to Brian and let's move on to the ZBA petitions.
I want to make it clear, Mr. Lyons can absolutely go forward with a two-family or duplex, whatever. And if he, we can work with the existing. But I just want to make it clear because I think there was some confusion when you were starting to talk about extra units and accessory dwelling units and so on. There is absolutely no problem in this district, building a two-family, you know, building it and you can build larger, you can expand and build it larger and you can add the garages and yes, absolutely, you will be, I will, you will be building, we expect that you will be building modern kitchens and bathrooms. So I don't see a problem with that. I just, I think we'll either, maybe Brian, you can pull it all together with Mr. Lyons, but I am very respectful of his saying, okay, ball's in our court. We do have to be, we have to offer some help here.
Yeah, if you want something that, if you want something that you want, you gotta step up to the plate.
Yeah, you're right. Of course you are.
Okay, thank you. All right, bye-bye.
All right, number three nine oh five thirty Clark Street. All right, number 3905, 30 Clark Street for ZBA petitions, please.
All right.
Alrighty, let me go right into it. Um, 30, 3905 is 30 Clark Street. Um, this is a special permit from, uh, section 3.5.5 to be permitted to construct an addition that would be located closer to the front and side property lines and permitted as of right. Additionally, the petitioner seeking site plan review from section 9.5.1, so it's to change the slope more than 6% of the existing grade. The property is located in the R G zoning district and contains, um, 4,380 square feet. The historical commission voted, uh, no adverse impact on a historic resource at their meeting on June 29th. So this is, um, a small, one-story, existing bump-out addition towards the rear of the property, and I believe it's a minor addition with no issues based on the scale, style, character, and material planned for the project. The footprint's not changing either, so no setbacks are changing. I recommend favorable action with regards to the addition slash upgrade of the house. What is of note, though, is really the large change in topography of the rear yard, which abuts DPW land. So to flatten out that lot, there's gonna be two retaining walls that are planned, which envelope the entire rear yard. The outer walls are, uh, over 10 feet high, and there's three large trees that are, um, being, um, demolished. Um, walls of this height are generally uncomfortable for the direct abutters, especially with the smaller lot that don't have a lot of frontage, uh, in this neighborhood. I would prefer that the lot in the house be improved, obviously, rather than join with another lot and demolish. However, I kinda felt that the walls of this height are, uh, too high for a thickly settled backyard, and I wanted to see what else that they could potentially do to lower these walls. Uh, that is all I had, uh, for this petition.
Uh, and members of the good, historical, um, the historical, of the planning board, do you have comments?
Um, I want to, um, concur with Brian's, um, findings. Um, I was trying to, I, I agree, the, the modifications to the house seem reasonable. So I don't think they're out of scale. Uh, I am really concerned that, at least in my measurements, one of the abutters will have a 15-foot wall, if I measured correctly, um, right next to them, and I think it'll turn their property, uh, into a cavern. And so I'm really concerned about the scale of that, we, of the landscaping in the back. That's it.
Well, I'll jump in. I had the same reaction, and I don't think the two are, um, meaning the addition of, for which they need the special permit, uh, has to be tied to this particular landscaping, so the work could go forward, but I, the, what was proposed with that retention, um, or where, yeah, whatever, building, uh, uh, the, with the wall, that big wall, that doesn't seem like a, something I would wanna see.
I actually had a hard time with the plans, um, understanding all the views of the wall and, like, how high the different parts were.
It was, um, there was a plan view, and then the plan view, yeah, I mean, it was a little, I can, I can go to it if you'd like, if that's what you're asking, but.
There was an elevation, but I couldn't tell. Yeah, I just couldn't tell from the one elevation I saw, like, how high it was from different views. Do you know what I mean? Like, who's seeing?
Well, maybe.
I think it was a section.
Oh, maybe that's why I was confused.
Yeah. Well.
It's called, it's a separate, it's like retaining wall estimate, stone strong retaining estimate worksheet.
Yeah, Brian just says to.
Summit Geo Engineering Services.
Yeah, it says profile. You're saying that is a, that's a section?
Yeah, that's, if you, it's essentially, if you looked from the, if you were at the base of that slope, looking up at the house.
Oh, right, yeah, no, that's what I thought. Yeah, yeah, I meant.
So it just wraps around, and if Brian gets to that part. Yeah.
Back up three, will ya, real quick? Yeah, just before you move forward, three slides back. There, right there. So I just wanna point out that what Deav is mentioned is accurate, that that structure is going to create walls in their neighbors' yards, essentially. If, I struggle with it, uh, and we'll can go to the section, I struggle with it, because I don't have a problem with it actually in the DPW, because the DPW has walls, and it's the DPW yard, um, and it can be dealt with later if there's ever any development there. Uh, but I do struggle with actually doing that to your neighbors. I, I feel that's really, that's a whole reason why we have that 6% in the zoning. You know, so you don't end up building those walls on your neighbor's yards, uh, up against your neighbor's yards, that are looking at these walls, um, that are not, that are not fences.
There we go.
Um, I think it's a 25-foot tall wall in one place.
So it's 25 feet, that's what the neighbor would see? That's what I couldn't.
Bottom, bottom is a 10-foot wall.
Yeah.
And, um, and then there is, see where there's stairs? So they're, 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 they're creating tiers.
Yeah, like a terraced yard.
Yeah, the one is 15, the top terrace is 15 feet, the side, the bottom is 10 feet.
Yeah, so, so Brian, if you could.
Because of the slope of the hill is so extreme.
Yeah, so.
So one is 15 at the top, from the 40 to the 55, and then, um, then it goes to 10 foot on the bottom. So they still have 10-foot walls at the bottom, and moves to 15 feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, so the, the, the distance to look at this plot is, um, if you see the bottom curve, which says grade in front of the wall, that's essentially the grade of the neighbor's property. And so if you measure from there to the top of those, those rectangular things, that is the distance that the neighbor would see. So at the maximum, if you go, um, downhill there, Brian, right there, you can see that the distance there is, I don't know, it's approximately 10 or 11 feet. And if you go to the other side, it's actually taller. So here, I measured it approximately 15 feet from the top of, down to the grade next that the, of the neighbor's property. So these are really substantial. You could, you could put in a handball court.
Heather, also, that you, um, you can see here, it says top of wall, or maybe you can't actually. Um, you know, top of wall, I think it's 52, bottom of wall 40, so there's a, that's 13 feet right there for this. This one has a top of wall 40, but nothing on the bottom of the wall, but you, um, it, your, your point is valid, it is not, you have to search to actually kinda figure this out, but I think it's clear that the walls are between 10 and 15 feet high.
Well, I think I was also confused about if you were a neighbor, like, what is the topography of your land, and would you wanna fill also so that you don't see the wall? Like, I just, you know what I mean? Like, without looking at it from either side, I couldn't really tell what that would look like in someone's yard.
Yeah, I mean, I think the closest thing, I can go back up, um, to the photos, but the entire, uh, neighborhood that abuts the DPW yard looks like this.
Mm-hmm.
So the whole, this, the, you know, on the south side of Clark, this is what it is. So obviously, it makes sense from their point of view, because they just want, like, hey, we have land we're paying taxes on, we should be able to use it. Um, but no, I, I, I think that the, the argument might be, well, people aren't using these, people aren't using this land, it's not like they're gonna be looking at a 15-foot wall. Um, but.
Are any of the abutters on the call?
Uh, we can certainly check, um, uh, if you are in a butter to this, uh, to this, uh, on this neighborhood, um, sorry, in this neighborhood along Clark Street, uh, or even near the DBW land, um, if you could either raise your hand or somehow get my attention, um, so we could get a perspective from the neighborhood, but it doesn't, doesn't appear that anyone is, uh, is here.
Well, the packet, um, packet, um, included, um, some letters from the neighbors who seemed to agree with the, well, it's all actually essentially the same, uh, letter, but signed by different people.
Yeah.
And they all talk about the streetscape and the scale of the house. None of the letters or none of the comments pertain to what's happening in the back.
I wonder if they saw those plans.
I'm going to jump in and say, having, um, but, my experience over the years has suggested to me that for many people, they wanna just get a, what, even if they had seen them, and I, I would actually question what they saw or what they understood, but those letters are only a piece of what should be analyzed. What's really important is the long-term, um, view of this, um, this property in the, um, in the neighborhood and in the town, and I just, I, I think that this is a, not a direction that we would wanna see, um, taken.
I agree.
I mean, we hate to say talking about precedents and whether this would set a precedent, and that's not how, you know, we don't necessarily act like that. ZBA doesn't necessarily act like that. The idea is that, you know, we, we're looking at the project itself. My thoughts, obviously, is that not really as a planner here, it's more as a homeowner. If I'm next to this person and I have a 15-foot wall, that's not inviting, it's uncomfortable, it doesn't, you know, it, it's just not, it's just that, it's, it's not comfortable.
Well, and this sort of came up recently with other high walls that people were complaining about.
Yeah, ones that were just six feet high, or seven, or seven feet high, or really what they've been is a five-foot fence with, uh, sorry, a five-foot wall with a four-foot fence on it.
Except the one on Ravenscroft.
Yeah, so, um, I, I think, in, well, I don't wanna step in and speak for the board, so I won't say anything. I think we're ready for a vote, personally, but.
Can I entertain one if someone would like to make a motion?
Um, I, I move that we, um, we, oh, what is the correct language? It's been so long since we had a meeting. I recommend favorable action on the addition to the house in that it, uh, and that we recommend unfavorable action on the landscaping, um, I think because of the impact of the abutters, and also, uh, I wanted to point out, it's taking out several large mature trees, which I forgot to mention earlier.
I second the motion.
Discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to jump in, and, um, I actually, I see Kevin Sarni, and I welcome having him join us. I think that our, when I've seen our memos go out to the ZBA, I think they've been awfully short, and we need to expand a little more. I give the ZBA a lot of credit for, um, really taking our recommendations seriously, but sometimes ours can be cryptic, and, uh, a few bullet points or a one-off, like, phrase, basically, uh, just isn't enough. So I would like to just make sure that, whether it's you or Brian, that you amplify a little more to, uh, summarize why we are recommending unfavorable on this landscaping.
Um, and if, if the board will accept it as the, the new clerk of the board, I can help with that.
That would be great, Deav, thank you.
Yeah, Deav, that would be great, because there's a lot of, um, paperwork that, um, I could use your support with, so, including that, um. Any discussion? Um, Betsy, Heather?
Nope.
Okay. No, Betsy, all right, so let's take a vote. Roll call, please.
Aye. Sorry. Sorry, Meister, aye.
Juror, aye.
Hannah, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Betsy, Betsy, are you there? Betsy's muted.
I shouldn't be.
Oh, there you are.
There you go.
Okay, there we go, okay.
We're taking a roll call vote?
Yes, aye.
All right, it's a, it's a 5-0 vote in, um, for that motion, and we'll send out a letter to the ZBA regarding that. Let's move on to number 3906, 36 Mount Pleasant Street.
Okay.
All right, um, 3906, position 3906, 36 Mount Pleasant Street. This is a petitioner seeking special permit, uh, again, through 355, so it'd be permitted to construct an addition that would be located to the front property line and permitted as a right. Um, it's in the RDB zoning district, and it is not conforming due to size, it's just under 10,000 at 9,786. Home was built in probably the mid 20, 1920s. Historical commission voted no adverse impact on a historic resource at their meeting on June 29th. Proposal entails an eight-by-22 one-story addition that enlarges a family room. No existing nonconformities are worsened as a result of this project. Based on the scale, materials, character, and location of this addition, I recommend favorable action with regards to petition.
Comments from the planning board?
Uh, I have a quick comment, in particular, uh, the picture, the photograph, which has a hand-drawn addition indicating where it will go, obliterates, it seems to me, a rather mature tree, and the landscaping plan as is presented is pretty minimal, and, uh, there's no indication whether or not that tree is going to be removed. So I note that the landscaping plan doesn't show any of the existing, um, what do you call them, plants, let's call them plants, because that's what they are. Um, so I don't know what's going on with that.
Is that the, um, is that the one that sort of looks like it's on the front, front of the yard? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Reference, okay, just checking.
Can you scroll?
Can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes, I can hear you.
Uh, this is Steve Margals, I'm the owner. Uh, that house is a Japanese maple, it's a, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful tree, which I have to tell you, has been growing so fast, we, it's everything to maintain it, but we are not giving it up. We, we will take off a few branches, but we will, we are maintaining that tree, believe me.
Okay.
Well, as chairman of the Public Street Tree Committee, I approve that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then my, my question is answered.
Thank you for clarifying. Is it Mr. Margals?
Yeah, Dr. Margals, but that's okay.
Thank you for clarifying, and I'm sorry, we didn't realize, I didn't realize you were, that the owner was on the call. I should have asked. My apologies.
No problem.
I know, that's the only trouble.
If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any other comments from the planning board? Entertain a motion?
Uh, I move that we recommend favorable action on, what is the, uh, what's the, the phone number on this one?
39. Mount Pleasant.
06, um, Mount Pleasant Street, 36 Mount Pleasant Street.
A second.
Mm-hmm.
Discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Juror, aye.
Gregor, aye.
Hannah, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Let's move on to the North Main Street RFP discussion.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, Doctor.
You're very welcome.
Um, okay, I'll, I'll just, I'll start off kinda quick. Um, well, so last week, and obviously the beginning of this week was taken up by the veil, but the goal was that we were going to have some type of a draft RFP related to the North Main Street study that we got in appropriation for, for $30,000 from town meeting.
Yes.
So, um, since this, there have been a number of people that are very interested in developing in the North Main Street area, um, and obviously, people are excited and want to, um, they wanna be a part of that, and they wanna know what they can do. I've heard, I've heard from. They want to be a part of that and they want to know what they can do. I've heard, I've heard from two or three residents as well as two or three builders. That they want to, they want to be told, you know, when we're going to be doing stuff because they would love to be a part of that and or listen in. So one comment that I've heard already. From a builder, just to start off a conversation. Was that they were really interested in trying to see if there was going to be some visioning exercises. And that that should be some of the main part of the this first phase of our study. And in that is that we should try to figure out what we, what the town and the board and everybody wants first. And then work backwards from that. So obviously, why am I talking about this? Because this changes what we're actually looking for in terms of our final deliverables. So I wanted to start the conversation off there to see what people's thoughts are of how much of visioning should be part of this study.
I'll jump in. I I think that's absolutely the right direction. I would like that.
Yeah, I agree. I think before we think about any strategies, we would want to make sure everyone's on the same page and we're not just assuming. What we want to do there.
When we originally spoke about this, we we spoke about essentially two phases. And the first phase would be looking at existing conditions and trying to understand the history and why development didn't proceed. And the second phase would be our visioning in terms of. Lessons learned from the CBD as well as what we wanted to see there. So. When we went before town meeting, we stressed the first phase. And I am concerned that we don't change what town meeting authorized us the money for. If that's proper English, which I doubt.
Brian, can you move down on my slides to it's probably six or seven? It's number six. Okay. So I, what I always envisioned is that that it would, visioning would be part of phase one, but we actually need to know what the barriers are before we can even envision. I mean, because you're making a lot of assumptions to vision when you don't really know what the barriers are. So I would see it as phase one as providing all that information and then visioning what should be. And then going into phase two is the part of it. My big question is, is does that fit within the budget?
Yeah, that's another. So I I I think that there can be. Visioning. First. And then you can, the question is whether or not there's going to be enough funding to do a visioning study. And then the barriers, what we'd be studying is like, what are the barriers in terms of why we are not seeing these things that we want to see? So I think we can. I think that's what everybody wants. It it, there's clearly high higher design needs to happen here. And the question is, is how are we going to get there? So that, you know, when we're looking at phase one, phase one really could be a visioning study. And then looking at the barriers that exist that why we're not there. I think that covers everything. The question is, is if the money covers that much work.
Well, maybe with COVID nineteen, there's not as much demand on the. I now, who are we talking about? But with visioning, it can be a planner, it can be an urban designer, it can be a combination. I I think, anyway, I think let's figure out what we want. For myself, I just think that the vision, because I was there with, I was not on the board, but when the vision for North Main Street was developed. Man, there were ideas like greener street and maybe are we wanting, how green do we want it? Are we doing zero setback now? Are we still wanting the green thing? Are we wanting just? Scale, maybe that's changed, scale more. Can we go? I I guess I still think that we really do want to look at that vision and maybe it's not that much because you're sort of like reading a draft. We've got a zoning bylaw for North Main Street, so we should just be looking at it and seeing what are people wanting and what does that? What does that, what's right now there baked into the zoning bylaw for GBD's mainly two and three?
But what people want and the cost and ability to do that are two separate things.
Well, I know that. Hang on, hang on. One more thought. You, we all know, and I'm going to call it that, the Marino Group building. That's sitting up there is the reality of the zoning, is that the vision for most people? And I think when you show that and say, this is what that zoning does by right, that we can already reach some conclusions.
Well, that's also not giving us the kind of development that we want, but the question is, why are we not getting the development we want?
Well, we also, what are we getting that has motivated a whole lot of people to say, uh-oh, how did that happen?
Well, I I. I think we got a lot of visioning through the master plan process. And I don't, you know, my, I understand why people want to see visioning. But I think that. If we are going to do it as part of phase one, it really has to be towards the end.
Well, then what are the barriers too? It's barriers to development and it's it's really barriers to what type of development? Which we won't know until we do a visioning. So I mean, I.
So I was, I was never crazy about this slide anyway, and I remember commenting and giving feedback and it, I don't know, it didn't quite work. In fact, the improved quality of development came in because I asked, where is it? And I was wondering why it wasn't in the first phase. So to me, there's a huge community of, or a lot of people I know who are still saying, why did we get that? And I just think that's a starting point.
Well, it's really barriers to quality development.
Well, we know why we got that. It's, the zoning was written to specifically allow it. That's why we got it. I mean, it was, there was a chance to change the zoning back in the seventies or eighties. Then instead they went with the village overlay district, which affected only a small portion. And we got that because that was deemed acceptable. The 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 planning board had, and I I have the minutes, which I gave to Brian, planning board originally wanted to have lower. They were going for two and a half stories, smaller developments. And they removed that. And this is what we got. So I, in a sense, we know why we got it. I mean, every single development along North Main Street has fitted into that exact model. So.
So isn't the point now, what is it we'd like? What is the scale and what? It's more, how do we get the quality? Heather did pick up that word, Heather von Mary, the quality. I think the big question is, how do we improve the quality of the development?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, I think the question isn't really, I know we wrote this already, but the question probably is less, what are the barriers and what kind of development do we want to see?
I agree.
We also see that, for instance, there are all of the, you know, we've got. I'm not, I'm not sure anymore where we're, where North Main Street starts. But we have. A number of places like the. The Burger King, the lots along that side of 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 Main Street, which for some reason have not. Changed over the last umpteen zillion years, even though financially you think that you could go in there and build something. So my question is, why is it that that part hasn't been better developed? You know, we did have that, you know, a couple of years back, we had people wanting to come in and and where the. The garage, right across from, I guess it's the Burger King, there was a garage and a used car sales, no, not the used car, but the garage and where Bagel Land is. There was a development that wanted to go in there and we haven't heard from them in a while. So the question is, why didn't they go forward? So there's a lot of, you know, why do we still have a muffler place up on North Main Street? What is it about the economics provided to someone from going in there and saying, hey, we can build a really nice retail residential establishment here? Why is it that never happened?
Well, I guess I want to jump in and say that we do need to talk to the, or I don't know if we need to, I don't need to, talk to the owners many times. And I could name names and I'm not going to, but for many of these small business owners, that's their livelihood and they're not seeking to sell out. You might think, oh, but you can get some windfall there. It's still not enough. They have an ongoing income from their existing business. So it's not, I think it's, I don't know, I I think that that's an important part of the understanding what's going on. And the more you know these businesses, the more I think you can appreciate why they just, why they don't want, they're not, they're not interested in selling, period. That's it. I'm not wanting to sell.
Well, I I completely agree if they own the land. I don't know how many.
There are a lot, there are a lot that own the land. On North Main, not, not majority, but there are a good chunk and they do have successful businesses that are running inside of them. There are some that. We would need to do more, get more information on, but I do know of a handful of businesses on North Main and they're very successful and they, they don't want to be in the construction industry.
Well, that's fine.
They own the land and they do it. But so going back to the question. If the master plan does give us a lot of information on what the residents want in terms of development. And the, so I would. And what, do we need to have pictures to say what that development is? Or can we do it along the same side of study, study the North Main region, provide us what the barriers are to development, quality development? And which includes, which would include in the RFP, what what defines quality? And then, once those barriers are removed, what do you anticipate we would have as that, what would you vision it looking like thereafter? I think as a board, we're, we have enough information that we got from the master plan that a lot of those, what defines a quality development along North Main. Right? We know that the residents in that area would like to make sure that the buildings recede and massing as they approach the residential areas. We know that. That parking would be dealt with and that it, that there'd be. That there'd be proper sidewalks and ADA compliance in the new developments. You know, we have a good list of those things. Do, are you saying that you want to? Do like the visioning that was done with the CBD to then create? I I'm confused on what you're actually saying when you say vision.
So let me jump in because I think the the million dollar question is just how much? And even now, as I trust most of you, or all of you know, GBD two and three are are a little different. But so the question is, how much is, are we really going to push for retail on the first floor? And do we want residential? Or do we want all residential? Or do we want, the idea of the Village Center overlay was to create these little commercial nodes. But so there is some question about just what, what do we want the street to look like? Is it still, how much is res, what's the mix? Basically, is it a mix? Is it residential? Is it commercial? Is it concentrated at the major intersections? I think those are the big ones. And after that, maybe back to scale. Is it two and a half stories? Is it three? Height, height, we have to deal with that. Those would be the big questions.
Yeah, I I agree. Those are the big questions. I, when we talk about what sort of a mix of commercial versus residential. I think we don't have the data to understand what's feasible. And that's where I would think a consultant would be able to say, you know, let's look at comparable communities. Which, you know, have the same sort of residential density that we have and how how much can they support? And so we might say, yeah, we want to have. Commercial on the first floor in these areas, but unless we know that that's feasible, I don't know that the vision helps us.
I just want to say, say something. I don't remember how many people from the. The neighborhoods on either side of North Main participated in the master plan. But one reason that people do visioning at the neighborhood scale is to get more detail about what the people who actually. They're really want and what they'd want to see and to have them be more part of the process. So I worry if we just kind of take what we heard, you know, a year ago and say, we're good, we're going to do this study and not do visioning with the neighborhood. That we've, we've lost an opportunity to engage them and have them own, you know, and to buy into what, what we end up changing for North Main Street.
All right, can you go to the next slide? Brian? Thanks. So really, the whole goal of everything for North Main is create a village character. And what does that character look like? And increased economic activity investment in the area. Right? That's really the main goals. So the vision I I is, and this, this, I know that. Many of the town meeting members in precinct eight and. Is it six? That's down low.
True.
The two, I'll. They are, from my understanding and all the meetings that they attended and they've been attending the the demo hearing. And they were very active. The last time we went to town meeting to rezone that area to do some stop gaps. That their goal is village character. Is what they really want. They want the village character that everyone, the center business district has, but they're not getting in theirs. And that's why the goals of the end of what, after we do everything, we should, what we want is that village character on Main Street. We want more economic activity investment going on. FinCon. I'll just take a moment. They, they want the economic activity. They want investments going on in the, in the North Main region. Whether that was inside their purview to make a vote on that because that's what they want, that's a different discussion. But there's been, that's what people want, money invested in North Main. How do we do that while giving the village character? That's the bottom line. And the first phase, we have to know what is stopping the village character from happening. And what do we need to do to get the economic activity? And I think there's going to be some clashing in there and we'll have to make some decisions. To do that, but we also know it's not the zoning. The zoning is giving them a free for all on a lot of things that are causing it. To get the, what Maureen called the Marino Project, because I can't think of the address off the top of my head. So. I want to know how to get to that village character. We can, we can grab tons of images of village characters, like the one that's on here. And maybe it is actually allowing smaller lots. Instead of going bigger, go to smaller lots. So that you can do smaller commercial buildings. Anybody, it's just, this is the goal. This is the really big end goal. How do we get there? What do we need to do to actually vision to show what the village character is that they want?
Well, I would, I I agree. I I suggest then perhaps that phase one, I mean, we we are limited to 35K. So I think that if we want to incorporate visioning, then that's something that the planning board should do on its own without going through a consultant. I think that we have a. A sketch of what the vision would be like, would would be from the master plan. And I think that that could be a launching point for speaking with the neighborhoods. And getting an idea where they stand on thing, on on how they accept that or how they want to tweak that. I think it's important to provide some context for the conversations. Because otherwise, we're going to be acting as external consultants and I don't think any of us has been trained to do that. And then the 35,000 can go towards doing economic studies or studies of of different types of zoning, which might help or things like that. So we could go forward on on two fronts on that one.
There's someone that's had their hand up that is not part of the board. I didn't know, Heather, if we were entertaining comments from outside the board at the moment.
I'll, I'll, I'll let him speak. I'm sorry, I didn't see the hand up. Go ahead.
All right, Francis Roberto, why don't you go ahead whenever you're ready?
Hi, thank you. My name's Ralph Roberto and my wife is Francis Roberto and we're the owners of eight oh two Main Street, which is that used car garage and. And all there. And I just wanted to do two things. One is encourage you to include business owners. And I just wanted to do two things. One is encourage you to include business owners in collecting information. Because we do have a lot of ideas. We would like to put up something there that the, the town would be proud of and that would fit. The issue is, as obviously in any development, it has to be economically feasible. And we've begun working with some architect. We're looking at different options. I can just give you an example. One of the options is a medical, a medical building, a small medical practice building. And some of the parking restrictions are quite difficult there. So again, I, I just wanted to comment, it's not necessarily because we have a thriving business that we don't want to change that. We would like to get that to the highest and best use. We would like it to fit in with the vision of the town. But we would like to be able to build something that's economically feasible, that does fit. And that's why I think if we get the opportunity with other business owners to give you our input early in the process, I think that could be helpful. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Heather, I think, I think what I was getting at with visioning is, is more of the process side of urban planning. And as a, an urban planner, I can't really like ignore that part, you know? We're trained to be including neighbors and residents and business owners, like you just said, at all steps of the process. So I was just worried that maybe what we were outlining was a consultant jumping in and doing a bunch of work and us not checking in regularly with the community in a more involved way than just like, you know, town meeting members or, you know, whoever decides to join one of our meetings.
Yeah, no, I think you and I were talking about two different kinds of visioning. I was looking at sketching and design, like stuff like that versus you're looking at the vision of, that, that actually has to happen. There has to be meetings with the business owners to say, what is going on? Where, why, you know, why, what do you want to see? Where do you want to go? What's holding you back? What, why don't you want to, why do you want to?
Like, that's how we learn things. That's how we learn to, what people want.
Yeah. I was looking at it, the vision of more of like sketching. That's the vision that I was like, we don't need to do sketching right now.
No, that's.
In terms of a community conversation, that's different than, that's how, we can only get the data, but in terms of.
That's what I thought Brian was talking about when he said.
I feel quintessential picture. We kind of know where they're going with it. It's just, so that's where I was. I was looking, I was thinking more of the visioning in terms of sketching, not in terms of feedback and information and data. If we had that data, we'd be done with this. We don't have any of that data.
Um, I muted because I, I agree with what Heather.
And that's what I thought Brian meant.
We, I, I just really, we certainly do want to include the business owners. I did want to follow up on that. I know from many years ago with the North Main Street development, medical use is actually a really high traffic use. That a medical building is, would be a pretty hard addition of what? It, it would be a challenging addition for the neighborhood already. So, and all the stresses already we're discussing on Canal Street and I don't know where else, Pond and so on. That, so that's an example of where we really need, there is what the business owner is thinking or the property owner is thinking. But there's also what's, how is the traffic impact? What, how does that impact the neighborhood?
I think we're all on the same page then.
Yeah.
I think I misunderstood what the visioning description was.
Yeah, I think, I think what would really help at this point is if someone, unnamed someone, would just sit down and collate all of the thoughts we've had and try to come up with, you know, a couple of paragraphs describing what we would like. And I,
No, I'm, I'm happy to continue. I mean, that, it was going to be a lot, well, we, I was given a few weeks and it just didn't happen. But that's, I'm certainly agree with that. And Heather Hannan, you're, you're, I, you were picking up what I was getting at in terms of feedback early on so that we can kind of have a roadmap. Or not necessarily a roadmap, we have the destination and then we use the consultant to get the roadmap.
I just want to make sure that, because I know some of the people who spoke to you, Brian, were business owners. That it has to be a joint between those, the business owners and the residents. At the end of the day, it's not Tom Meeting who makes the zoning changes. It's Tom Meeting. And so there has to be a balance. And that is pretty much what we have to do as a planning board as well to find that balance. And do the best we can with the information we're given. And I just want to make sure that's, that's well known. Because I know that a lot of people feel that Main Street is owned mainly for commercial purposes. But it has tremendous impact on the neighborhoods as well. So it's just, including traffic. Also, we have to look at that as well.
Could I make a suggestion along those lines? Maybe when we have a, a better written idea of where this is going, we could reach out to the town meeting members of the precincts which border North Main. A lot of them are pretty much in touch with their communities and get the word out that we are looking to start this conversation.
Yep, absolutely. And also, we can also, we know all the owners too as well of Main Street properties and can also send them letters too. I think it makes sense that we might, we will be have to doing some lifting on this. It's not just going to be turning it over to consultants. We'll have to be holding meetings as well. It's because we can't, on the budget we have, we can't just turn it over and say, take care of it. But we'll have to be doing some public meetings as well for input and thoughts and come up with a very strategic agenda of Q and As of information we need from them. So for feedback.
Yes, we can't be, for $30,000, we can't really be relying on lots of meetings or any, any of that. That's going to be mostly us doing those meetings, not the consultant.
Yeah, but if consultants can tell us what they need the answers to, we can be the ones to go then take the time to ask them.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, there's not going to be five meetings with the consultant and the, and the public. That, that, that's all I was trying to say.
Yep, thanks. Brian, do you have a good idea to take it from here?
Oh, sure. Yeah, definitely.
All right.
And I offer my services as the newly elected clerk.
I will take them.
All right. Should we move on to our 21 agenda items discussion?
Yeah, before we move on, I mean, it's related to that, but yes, I'm hoping we could. In terms of agenda for not just FY21, but most recent, some decisions that need to be made are, that are important right now are, one, having to do with the veil. Meaning I know that there's some differing opinions on, do we have a separate meeting that's, you know, just devoted to the veil? Do we not really, you know, do we have a 20 minute time so that, so that people can, people from the neighborhood can, can sound, that come in and give their feedback? It's kind of a little up in the air. So we have one more meeting scheduled before August 3rd. Which is the, again, although unlikely, that is the first potential time that the city council could vote. Heather, you had said that there would be some type of a comment letter. But the question that I think we should, because this is basically our next meeting that we need to figure out, is what we're doing with the veil. So I'd like to open up that discussion.
Well, I, I confess to my ignorance about a lot of what has been happening. In particular, the impact of the developments on Sunset Road in terms of the, you know, the, the height of the project above essentially grade level. Those are things that I, I don't really know what's been happening. And I would find it really useful to have a 15 minute or 20 minute presentation on the state of the project, where it's at. I do, there are a lot of moving pieces that I just can't put together at the moment.
Okay, that's certainly easy enough to give an update at our next, at the next meeting. And then it's a question of, are we going to be a sounding board for residents? Before the board issues a letter?
I would encourage that.
Okay. Anybody else want to chime in?
Brian, I'd really like to be very clear about where we fit in legally. And from what I can tell, I mean, just, we even, even legally, under the zoning, we make our recommendations to the zoning board. I don't know where exactly we fit. I, you don't have to answer that question now. But I want to keep this really tight because this could just be a free for all. And it's really, I'm sorry, but we have so much that we can do that's productive. And this, I think we have a very narrow, a very, very limited ability to even address this project.
So legally, we are in a butter. So we are just like the town, meaning the town of Winchester is actually in a butter as well.
And as in butter, who represents the town?
So you, that is, so the, the select board typically, when there's any type of intercity or inter, or inter municipality, the, the select board is the one that issues the, what do you want, conditions, demand, whatever you want to call them. Is, 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 so it's the select board.
How are they bringing their recommendation to, and what, well, I mean, they're not, are they running a hearing? Well, how are they taking input?
So the, there were a number of multiple neighborhood meetings. So the neighborhood along Sunset and around that area near Dana as well. They've been having meetings and the select board members have been going to those meetings. This, this did creep up on, so everyone that got sent letters. So they got sent letters something like three weeks ago.
So I'm just going to jump in. It's okay. But so I just don't know how much of our time could get overwhelmed without putting very clear, what, control over the, over moving this onto an agenda. That's all.
Yeah.
The Maureen's question, I, it was unclear to me what our role was or like what we would want to chime in about, or I don't know, I feel like maybe I don't have enough information either to understand how we want to get involved.
So most of what we've been involved with previously has been through the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency filing, the MIPA filing. If you've heard that, they have what's called a draft EIR, environmental impact report, D, that's a DEIR. And then when it's done, it's called a final, an FEIR. So we all commented on the FEIR, which looks at very large picture issues. So we, we did, the planning board did have a comment on that previously. And now that was the master plan that went through the FEIR. And now what's happening is the special permits are for each individual project. So there's two special permits right now and those are the predominantly residential components. They're basically doing this in order to fund the rest of the development on the north side for the commercial part. The point is, is that, you know, there is not a clear role of the planning board. It's more of the neighborhood got wind of the meeting, obviously from the notices and started asking lots of questions that we just did not know the answers to. Then last Monday, we found out that the meeting was actually tonight. So we found out eight days before. So that's when I, I literally just dropped everything and so did Beth. And we put all of our effort into reviewing this project, the, the two projects. So, so you're, Maureen is right. There is not a clear indication that the planning board has a role here. The neighborhood is asking for the planning board to take a role. That is clear. The select board, how they are taking in public comment as of now is, like I said, they're actually going to those meetings. They, the group is very organized. They have a, they have online shareable documents that, that have listed all of their concerns. We incorporated many of those concerns into the comment letter. Some were not under our purview, so we didn't. I think that answered all the questions.
So I see our role as providing a unique planning view of this project and its impact on the neighbors. And providing that view to the select board. If, I don't know that it's within our purview to directly write letters to the Woburn City Council. I don't know why it wouldn't be. But certainly we have a view of what we would like those neighbors and the neighborhoods to be, not the neighbors, but the neighborhoods, to be, to retain that quality that they have. And I think that's an important viewpoint from the planning board. That is our purview. So I think that we may not have a, a really large role, but certainly we have a role where we could amplify the concerns of the residents and present our own concerns to the select board and their official missives.
What is the timing, Brian?
Sure. So the timing right now is the city council opened the meeting tonight. Sometime next week, most likely. Again, we don't, we don't know. But sometime next week, there will be a public meeting that is not considered a hearing. Meaning it, meaning that it's unclear if there will be time or whether we, if the public will be allowed to speak. But sometime next week, a special per, permit committee is what it's called, will review this project. They will then issue a memo and deliver that memo to the, to the, the Woburn City Council leading up to the continuing of the hearing on August 3rd. So legally, they, they could potentially just, you know, approve this on August 3rd. It's doubtful. Uh, we are very much hoping that does not happen because that means that there would not be enough time for other peer review that, that town of Winchester is willing to pay for. We are probably going to spend a lot of money on looking at the stormwater infrastructure. Clearly our engineering department, I mean, no town's engineering department or city for that matter would be, have the ability to look at a project like this. So there's no doubt we'd have to go to peer review, but we can't force the city council to pay for that. So most likely the town is going to pay for this. And the reason why is because we've spent tens of million dollars of, on stormwater infrastructure. We want to make sure that that money is safeguarded or that infrastructure is safeguarded. So we want to make sure that they're not going to be doing anything to make our situation worse in terms of flooding.
So I'm going to jump in. So in the past, the planning board ended up being the point for this in the beginning, Brian. I, my memory serves me right. And so we took, and we held meetings with those residents. And yes, the composition of the retail and residential and stuff on Woburn has shifted and changed. But we have always said that we will fight for that, for, in, in our meetings, that we would keep pushing. And I remember sitting there looking at the developer and saying, you better give our residents screening. And if you're going to do that road, it is only going to be emergency access. And now that's even questionable if they can do that because of certain laws. But you better give us a setback and you better give us a screening from that. There is, that is not appropriate to put that massing up against our single family residences. So, but we never said, don't do it or anything. In terms of the engineering, that is outside of our expertise in any way, shape or form. So I see what we do is we go review it. We do what we do if we were going to send something off to the ZBA or if we're the special permitting, what we would go through and say, these are the things we see that we would like to have addressed. We would like to see the screening. We'd like to, if we talk about the road, depending on what legal comes up with and what information we have there. I haven't read through Brian's memo. The setback of the retaining wall, I think there's a retaining wall coming in now, which they never talked about before. The loss of the greenery on our, on our edge of the property, like, right? So on the town's edge of the property. That is what I see us coming in at. That is stuff that we deal with on a daily basis, but that's where I see the letter would go. They did meet with us. I would like to go back, Brian, actually pull those meeting minutes from that meeting with the veil developing team and go back and see what the planning board said to them. And we can use that in our letter as well. Say, we met with them and such and such is saying they were going to do this. This is not done in this plan. We asked that this be done, right? So, if, if that's really about, it's kind of very simple because we can't go into the engineering. Besides, say, we support our engineering department and besides, we can't, we're not the road authority. That's the select board, right? The public way. But we can talk about the other things of what we would want developments if they were in our town, up against our town as well. What we would say and what we would do and expect.
Okay. So it looks like we will have some type of a letter ready for our meeting on the 21st, I believe it is. And the idea is that we, we, we would, you would entertain matters from the audience related to. matters from the audience related to the Vail, and I guess that the board would vote some type of letter in on the 7th, or sorry, on the 21st. Is that the idea? So that, um, cause like I said, a, a lot of neighbors have been very vocal in terms of trying to find out how they can best, um, attack this issue. So.
Oh, Brian, this is what I would say as a recommendation to the, the neighborhood who wants, I would like to see them, if they want us to consider something, to include in our memo that they do it through writing to us.
I agree.
And then the planning board will read through all of it, because the main people who have the most is the select board. So that they send us in writing, we'll read through everything that's written. We have a lot of documents to go over ourselves, um, and then we have the memos that you've created, um, on behalf. And then I'm sure the select board's coming up with their own, another one. Well, no, that last, assigned by the chair.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, yeah, that one, that one's done. If anything legal would have something else before the 3rd, um, they're doing more research, cause there's a lot. It's not just the emergency access issue.
Let me go through what I see the agenda. So then what I would, I'd say is then, we take all that information. We talk about what we want in the letter as a planning board. And then if there's anything they see missing, that they give it to us in, in, in feedback, we'll open it up. But they have to give us bullet points of what they want. And then we'll decide whether yes, yes or no, are we including it yes or no? Because if we open it up, because it really, at the end of the day, it's not, we can, we can write a letter and we can do, but at the end of the day, it's really the select board and the town manager. And I wanna make sure we leave that with them, but if there are certain things that we're missing that they feel might be appropriate for us to include, I'm happy to consider it. I just don't wanna go into, um, uh, you know, a, a roundtable circular thing. Where we wanna do a letter that supports the residents. If we're missing something, we just need to know what it is. Not have a huge discussion about it.
I agree with Heather.
All right, so we'll get something from the neighbors and we'll go from there. I think that's all we need to talk.
Ask them, give us the bullet point list of what you want included.
No, that, I, I think, I think that's already done with them.
That's appropriate for us to include. We're not gonna say no to them, right? I mean, unless it's out of our jur, our, our authority or our knowledge.
But are you talking about drafting the letter in a meeting or having a draft discussed at the meeting?
Having bullet points of what we want in the letter discussed, approving it and then turning it over to someone in the board to write.
After the 21st, you mean?
Uh, yeah.
Before the 3rd, yeah.
But before the 3rd.
All right, so I will get that bulleted list from the neighborhood. I think it's already written, so that's easy.
So the, the one thing that I, I'm missing is, how, how do I bone up on this? Because there's a lot of moving pieces. How will I educate myself between now and the 21st?
So I think the best thing that, um, so one is to read the letter that was issued both by the select board and legal counsel. And the other way, the other thing, um, I will forward this along. The planning board in Woburn reviewed these two special permits and had comments. And I think that is a, also a really good document. Between those two, just looking at the special part, so I sent around the special, the link to the T-Bod special permit. Um, that, that should, all, that should be all that you need, other than, I guess, the Woburn zoning code. Um, but really to look at this, yeah, the, the, I, I will send these all around in one email, so you don't have to be fishing around. Uh, so I will do that.
Thank you.
Um, outside of the Vail, the only other thing I wanted to talk about briefly, if I could, before F, before we get into the bigger conversation or whatever, another conversation about FY21 agenda item, is specifically fall town meeting. So I know it's crazy that we just had spring, uh, but before we know it, August is gonna be over. And, um, we, and the town is already starting to look towards fall town meeting for a number of reasons. So this is something that, um, we should try to figure out. One, are we, uh, doing, wha, what, if anything, are we doing more than what we had proposed in the spring? I believe I have those up. Um, let me get those in a second. Um, so. Um, so this was one very small change, that number one here that we were gonna do, that I don't know, we should, we should certainly move forward with, with that. And then, um, number four was a very minor one, it was to add the Disability Access Commission as a review authority to all the special permits I plan with reviews and variance applications. Outside of those two, is there anything that we wanted to talk about for, for fall, fall town meeting?
I'm going to jump in. It's, um, it, I just, we had this discussion and I see Mr. Stevens, I think he's still with us. I, I, I'm not gonna switch over right now. But we did make some, um, commitment to reviewing the, um, CBD zoning, especially, um, now, maybe Heather Von Miering, you can help me out. In the end, were you, it was more of, was it more a focus on the PUD? Or was it more a focus on the North Main and the development that it could, um, and that North Core? I'm sorry, the North Core, that there's some modifications that you had in mind. And then I think back to the, um, the neighborhood that's gathered around, um, the project and Main Street. What, um, what is it that they would like to see?
But I, I wanted to see the PUD get more language in the Center Business District. Right now, it's a free-for-all.
It is. I agree with you. That's terrible.
The one thing is, you have, you know, the, it's very, the language is, yeah, and it actually is.
Literally, there's no limit on it.
No, there's no limit, but there's also, you have to be more, you have to do above and beyond what's there. And that's very much into interpretation. And, uh, as you heard me hear about, um, on Vernon Street, I was that, you know, you gotta go above and beyond. You can't just keep giving the same exact affordability and know the diversity of housing. I mean, when you read it the way it is, so I think the PUD needs to be some, uh, language needs to be modified in that. Um, that, the, the PUD is what I really would like on the, in the zoning to be addressed.
So what about the North Core?
The North Core, I need studies, and I don't, I don't know how we're gonna get that done in time for, like, I wanna work on it, but we need information, and I don't think we're gonna get it, to make it, to even do a, a play, appropriate placeholder, to keep going forward with it in time.
I have to say that in terms of our resources, I am much more concerned about the PUDs than the North Core. There are only a couple of lots there, while there are quite a few downtown. So I would, I would recommend we focus on the PUDs.
So maybe we at least should invite the, um, North Core, I guess I'll call it North Core, the North Core, um, it's actually property owners, at least to let us know what they had in mind, cause they had some other ideas, and we said it was out of order. But in terms of the way that zoning was presented, but in the end, they withdrew. And I think we owe it to them to hear what their, you know, let's look at it again. If it weren't out of order, I, I think we oughta know what, what are the goals and what would be in order.
Well, yeah, so right now, we're just talking about what we wanna talk, what, do, what do we wanna consider for fall town meeting? So right now, me personally, I wanna look at the PUD.
Okay.
When we go to the, let me finish, when we go to discuss this in more depth, which would probably be at our next meeting, we can talk about the Center Business District, and we can get the other ideas and see if it's doable or not. It doesn't mean that it's off the table. It just means we may, how do we get there? And how do we get there the most appropriate way? Uh, so we will have to talk more about fall town meeting, and I'm fine taking in the North Core and looking at that for consideration to, for work to get to town meeting. But we also have a lot of other things in terms of we have to get done.
So they were criticized by, um, not coming to the planner and coming to the planning board early. So they got pushed off, and I think now ball's in our court.
No, I think the ball's still in their court. They know exactly what they need to do to bring this forward. We're always open to them. They can come forward, present a new proposal, and we'll work with them.
Yeah.
I really don't see that.
Here, I have to click the right thing. Is Mr. Stevens here?
He's here. I'm not gonna have him speak, cause right now, we're not talking about, yes, we are gonna do North Core, not. All we have to do is, he needs to just ask and say, "We wanna present these ideas to the planning board. I'll put them on the agenda, Maureen." He hasn't asked me yet. And right now, we're short on time, and we have 11 minutes left. So, um, you cut me off before I finished saying, "Is, let's put it on the agenda." If Mr. Stevens has, wants to present ideas that he wants us to consider for fall town meeting, let's put it on the agenda for next. But I was not under the impression he had ideas, and right now, my only, my main idea is the PUD. Um, so if, Mr. Stevens, you don't need to see, we don't need to hear from you, but can you please, if you have things that you want us to consider bringing to town meeting, can you please put them, send them in an email? We'll get you on our agenda.
Excellent. When's the meeting, please?
Well, I need, we need to get the information first for me to put you on the agenda. Our next meeting is on the 21st. If you wanna be put on the agenda, we need a memo from you the Wednesday before that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, anything outside of those two items for fall town meeting?
So then, right, so then we just, if you guys can see the screen, I just have these four things with these, with number one and two already locked and loaded to go, and then three and four clearly needs work, but it's possible we could do some changes. Um, this was just the, the assistant town manager had asked, are we doing everything that we had pushed off? And if we are, are we doing any more? So thi, thi, this is what I would tell him, these four things.
Uh, the one thing, if you guys, uh, go ahead.
I'd be raising my hand. It's hard to interject here. Um, so, um, the other one that's on the list that I have, uh, I think would meet with some support, especially from one of our select board members, is the abandoned or neglected houses. Um, I gather Brian did contact the Attorney General. There is this AG's project where they will try to help you, and I guess you didn't get any response. But we could also add to our zoning, and that's something where, with some, um, examples from other towns. I think that could be picked up and supported widely. Uh, we've got the example on Johnson Road, and I think there are, I mean, I know, there are several other people commented. I gather there are several on, uh, around Precinct 6. Um, frankly, 88 Harvard was, it's, looks like an abandoned house to me. But that's a pretty, uh, widely, um, ac- accepted, uh, what, um, uh, type of zoning that's needed and, or it may not be zoning even, it may be a general bylaw. But we, I think it would be better if it's a general bylaw. So I'd really like to get at that one.
Um, I don't know where we stand with the tree bylaw, but I sent you what the city of Cambridge did, which was so straightforward and simple. And so I, I was like, um, couldn't we just do that? So.
I, I don't know that the tree, the tree committee has, the tree bylaw, or whatever it's called, has not yet been formed or, well, it's been formed, but we haven't had any sort of scheduled meetings.
But you saw what, I sent it to you, the.
Oh, yeah, I agree. It's.
It's so straightforward, so simple. You need a permit if it's over eight inches, you know? And then you can get it waived if it's for four reasons. Done.
This is Maureen. Um, the one, I mean, I, if, but if I were sitting on a city council, I would vote for it. Let's put that out there. I'm sup, I think it's, um, something that I'm sympa, or it is, it's something I'm sympathetic with. Cambridge has a city council. It's a very different animal from a town meeting. And as much as it's simple, I just, uh, it boggles the mind trying to imagine how this would fly at town meeting. So that's something that's a reality, um, is this the way to go? But I think this needs some political momentum before you could bring it into town meeting.
I, I think, well, it, there's a lot of interest in it right now among town meeting and residents. But we won't actually know in this current climate unless we bring it to town meeting and we get feedback on the floor of town meeting, really.
So wouldn't though, there are ways to create, um, public meetings and call attention and, um, sort of bring, bring people along. This one's controversial. I, I don't, and to, I mean, I, I'm, as you know, I'm willing to fail. But without even doing any spade work, it just seems to me like not the, um, the best way to start. But, uh, and where is that committee? I think the committee should be taking some ownership.
Yeah, I think it's from the committee.
I'd like the committee to consider it, doing something very simple like that.
I think that as, as the planning board's represented to the committee, I will definitely bring that up. I, I just think I, I agree with Maureen that we need some work. But I also think that I'd like to see this committee start having meetings.
Yeah. Um, so who do we need to get in contact with? Do you just need to reach out to the Chair of CONCOM and be like, "Let's start"?
Yeah, that's just, it's just organizing with Elaine, and I think there's two mem, two members from CONCOM. Um, I'll make a note to.
Okay.
Get a meeting going.
I thought I had volunteered also.
Yes, you had.
Oh, okay.
So, so many of you to remember that.
Well, no, I thought you meant like people had been talking, and I was thinking I hadn't heard anything.
No, 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 we haven't. So, yeah, it's, um, so Deven and Hannan, and then it's gonna be Elaine Relin and Zeke and one other member. So, um, message received.
Well, if it, if they do meet and they feel to go forward with it, I'm fine making that happen. If we want to go a different route, I'm fine with that too. I just don't want it taken off the table until they meet. Um, hmm, sorry, I muted, I muted myself. Um, I think that's about all we can handle right now.
Um, I don't, there wasn't any, there certainly wasn't anything else that was pressing. That was, to be honest, a very quick two and a half hours. Um.
Yeah. Um, I'm just wondering, did, are ADUs on this big spreadsheet? I can't remember.
Yours, not all of yours got incorporated into this master, because it looked like people were actually not super interested in filling out which is more, which is more pri, has more priority than another. So I, we kind of abandoned this idea, but I still, I do have your list as well, Deven.
I can, I can tell you that I wasn't sure at what point the list was complete, so that I knew when I could start.
It's not complete.
Yeah.
If it's complete, I'd be more than happy to put my, my, my voices, my choices in.
Um, all right, well, um, it looks like this is more of like, this is all a big mess of, well, not a mess, but it's a whole bunch of different things that we're, everyone is super interested in, and we're trying to tick them off as, you know, as we go.
I think we're gonna have to do like, uh, you know, you prioritize, we're gonna have to take the list and give it numbering. Like, if there's one through 20, you put them in your top priorities and you make it known, cause we can't do all of it. We can do a lot of it, like subdivision fees, right? We, Brian, that's be done with engineering and Brian behind the scenes and legal.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree. I just.
There's certainly, you know, there's some things that are, we can't do.
Heather, I think Brian should take a whack at it and just try, instead of your, um, list here of different people's priorities, um, more like a master plan, action plan, or implementation, just indicating who's really in the lead. Cause some of these, it's really, uh, Brian or even engineering, and some of it, uh, maybe even legal. Uh, and some of it is us going into town meeting. So I think it's more a matter of what type of activity this is that's important to move, uh, move into a chart.
Okay, I, I, that's fine to do that and before we go to the next round. Um, the, the, I had a conversation with, uh, Mike Betancourt and, um, a week or two ago discussing, um, policies, um, across all boards and commissions. Um, there's a lot of policies that are, there's holes and gaps in. Um, and so, in turning of, uh, basic town bylaws of how commissions and committees and boards are running, that they would like to, uh, put together a committee, and obviously the planning board, he called to let me know he'd like to have the planning board be part of that in, specifically in the elected boards. Um, so, you know, if someone's app, absent for a very extended period of time, we can have, um, that the law is in place that they can be, um, there can be turnover in those situations, or whatever may be. Um, we don't have any of those laws on the books, um, so, uh, and there's not much actually, uh, according to legal to deal with that. So, um, they're gonna be couldn't, putting together a committee, and we'd like the members of the planning board and the school committee to sit on that, to come up with, um, things that all the elect, and all the elected boards, cause there are other elected boards and committees as well, um, through. Um, but to start that and to get that, you know, onto our books. So, um, just to keep that on, is that something that's gonna come up? I do think it's important to our board. Um, we can do, um, we look at our, like, policies and procedures. Um, I think we're actually in a pretty good place, um, as a board overall, um, but as a townwide, there is an issue. So, uh, just to make you aware that that is my newest, uh, action item we've been asked to do.
So are we, are we looking to place a person on that committee, or you?
It hasn't been formed yet. I just wanted to give you a heads up that they're looking at doing that, and.
Okay.
I didn't see any problems with them doing it. I thought it. I didn't see any problems within doing it. I thought it felt good, like a.
Yeah.
I felt that it was a good thing to do and that I didn't see any issues with us sending someone to those. Meetings to come up with a recommendation for town meeting to add a bylaw in place for that, for the elected officials.
Okay.
It's just more an update. Um, and we'll add it to the list, Brian.
Oh, I know something else. Um, I, I know it was on the list, but this I think Art should be co- contacted about. Kids' ideas about subdivisions and then we got this mystery um, uh, um, email, or at least mystery to me about somebody wanting to. File a subdivision. These things are, yeah, it's two different things, actually. It's what's Art recommending. And what about those subdivision fees? We were thinking, we've got something, I assume we voted. I assume it's been enacted, Brian. But the subdivision fees we did put in place, but I think we have another level of uh, review for how we proceed with subdivision fees.
That is correct. We, 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 we.
Alright, I think we're gonna have to call it and come back. Um, it's ten oh one. Maureen has to be done at ten. I wanna be done, I'm sorry. Today I am burnt out. Um, so if it's alright with you.
Um, yeah, I will just send around um, kind of the crash course for the veil in one email. So you, um, and that's the, the next order of business for us. We're leading up to our meeting on the twenty first.
Okay, Brian, with that, the overall, can you just send the, don't send like the entire packet of drawing, just send the plan? And the.
Yeah, the, the special permits are, are in a link, so you don't have to download any of that.
Yeah, but could you just pull out the plan and the elevation that faces a residence?
Oh, yeah, we, they won't.
Hunting for it, it'd be so much.
No, I know, but they don't even ha-, they don't even have, that's part of what my comment letter, they don't even have drawings from the neighborhood. It's pointless. There's elevation drawings, but they mean nothing because they're in, in space. I mean, they, they don't mean, they don't mean anything.
Are they all perspectives?
They're not perspectives, they're just straight up, you know, north, south, east, west elevations, but um. Or sorry, facade elevations, but there, there's absolutely no rendering or anything like that. From the actual vantage points of the neighborhood, so you can't even say what this is going to look like. And whatever, I, I will clearly send everything and try to make it as easy as possible.
That's great.
They're missing, they're clearly missing a lot of stuff related to that. Because it's on, I mean, this is the only neighborhood they're actually dealing with and it's just very, it's, it's very clear that it's secondary for them. Um, and it's, we're basically like, look, it only about twelve families, like make these twelve families happy.
Well, they're probably like, it's only twelve people, who cares, right?
Right, we're, we're obviously gonna fight that as, as much as we can. I mean, like I said, it's not like they're uh, 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 with, you know, so many residents. It's like, it's a, it's a small neighborhood, a small portion of a neighborhood that they're, that they're affecting tremendously, so. Um, I will send that out and.
And Brian, keep me in the loop on the ZBA letter.
The ZBA letter.
From our, our votes today.
Uh, correct, sure, will do.
Let's go back, um, at the end of our meetings, we kinda stopped it when we went to COVID, to go back to the to-dos.
Yeah.
I won't do it today, um, but we'll go back to the doing that before we adjourn quickly.
And also, can we, I think we have to, I'm sorry, but we really have to put the minutes at the front of the meeting if we leave it to the.
Yeah.
Exhausted.
I agree.
Thanks, and thanks to Nancy. Thank you, Nancy.
Oh, yeah. Hello from far away. Um, they're excellent, by the way. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Yes, they are, thank you.
Um, but we will move those to the front of our meeting on the twenty first, on the twenty first, we will do that. We also have um, some petitions and that will be coming before us, including seventy-seven Woodside that's going to the ZBA the following night. Um, I understand is that DRC is reviewing that tomorrow night, I believe, and Historical has reviewed it. Um, we also um, will be taking on if um. The North Main residents have things that they want us to look at to, for a town meeting. Um, if that comes in before, we'll add that to our agenda. Um, we also will come back to our town meeting articles um, and go through our priorities. Anything else? And the veil, so that'll be our next agenda, pretty much. Sound like fun, um. Through and get um, our dates for August, um, when people.
I think I was gonna actually do August, September, and even though that sounds scary. Um, I was gonna send out a doodle poll for August and September.
Sounds good. It is what it is. Um, alright, and Brian, as of right now, we're still going remote for the time being. There's no, nothing in the laws coming in that's saying we have to go back to being in person?
There's certainly nothing saying that we have to. Um, we are still open but for appointment only. Um, I have not gone through all of the re-, the phase three reopening guidelines for everything. But it looks like all of the numbers in Massachusetts in terms of inside attendance. Has gone from like ten people to now twenty-five. So that probably would allow some public meetings, but it's really more of a policy that has to come directly from Lisa. And right now, there's no public meetings.
Can you give her the feedback that I would like to maintain Zoom meetings during this duration? Because um, it gives equitable access versus if we do in-meeting, we can, then we're limited to twenty-five. And if there's more that wanna come, and then you have the rotation and people coming and sharing seats and.
Yeah, no way.
I, I can certainly pass that along and do not think that this is going to be an issue for us.
Yeah.
No, but I like the policy for the town and she does do meetings on a regular basis with the state.
Meaning that I don't think she's going to have an issue with that position.
Yeah, but it also may help support the select board to go for it as well and continue this practice.
Oh, and I have one last question. What, where is this subdivision that somebody wants to file?
Oh, uh.
You respond?
Yeah, no, uh, he did. Uh, I, I, give me a second, I just, um. Where was it? Um, he, he did respond. Um, it is for eighteen Lockone. This was the um, the, the parcel that we. Uh, changed zoning of from, it used to be the uh, rug cleaning facility, the Bodakian, I believe, rug cleaning facility. They got, now it's in the RG, I believe it's two duplex lots, so I think they're, they're just getting uh, that situated. So, nothing, uh, nothing that we weren't aware of already.
I just ask because that, we have to build that into our time for the.
Sure, yeah, yeah, no, so, yeah, eighteen Lockone.
Alright, I'd love to entertain a motion to adjourn. Alright. Meeting is adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, wonderful. Have a good um, rest of the week, everybody. And I would imagine there's gonna be a lot more emails flying around from uh, tonight's bail meeting, so look out for emails and I'll see everybody in uh, in uh, two weeks.